This meeting will come to order. This is a meeting of the Land Use Committee for Wednesday, January 15th. Our first order of business is to elect a new chair. I'm going to open the floor for nominations for Chair for the Land Use Committee. I'd like to nominate Isabel Piedmont Smith. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, say nay. Councilor Piedmont Smith, I pass the gavel to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't get a chance.
All right, we are here to talk about ordinance 2001 rezoning property from Commercial Limited to Planned Unit Development. The Tyler Curry property at Longview and South Pete Ellis Drive. And we have Jackie Scanlon here from Planning Transportation to present.
As Ms. Piedmont Smith said, this property is located on the east side of town at the northwest corner of Longview and Pete Ellis with Seventh Street running along the west, as you can see in the map on the right here. The property is 3.2 acres. It is currently zoned Commercial Limited. The comprehensive plan designation for this area is Regional Activity Center focus area for the new hospital that is, new hospital campus will be located northwest of this area. And as you can see, the property is currently undeveloped. The proposal for the planned unit development tonight is for preliminary plan and district ordinance approval. So basically, the rezoning portion of a planned unit development. And the rezone would specifically allow one four-story building, as shown here, with 19,000 square feet of commercial office space on the east side of the building, 264 units with 344 beds. And that would be a mix of studios, ones and twos, with two beds comprising about a third of the units. They would be including 306 onsite parking spaces in the center of the building in a proposed parking structure, and 15 on-street parking spaces along Pete Ellis to the east. The property is less than five acres, which is the minimum for PUD, so would require a waiver approval to be allowed to be rezoned PUD as well. The uses requested in this zoning, in this planned unit development are those uses that are allowed in Commercial Limited with the addition of dwelling multifamily. And that would be to allow first-floor units, which are currently not allowed in Commercial Limited. They're also requesting to remove the square footage limitation on the size of the allowed retail that is allowed in Commercial Limited. The proposed density for the property is a maximum of 30 units per acre. The particular development details of this site are actually 29 units per acre. I believe in the staff report, there is a typo and it says 20 units per acre under residential density. That should be 29. They are proposing to use Commercial Limited architectural standards with some changes, including modulation requirements that are usually required for the first-floor commercial along Pete Ellis. They would be using a 15-foot setback to the north. There would be some inset of the building that would be up to 20 feet. They would be leaving 34 percent open space, which means a 66 percent coverage. Currently in Commercial Limited, 50 percent is allowed. And the, again, I said four-story building, and the maximum height would be 57 feet. There's quite a drop on this property in elevation, and so though it would be four stories, it would be 57 feet tall. Again, the density requested is 30 units per acre. Commercial Limited allows 15 units per acre. And then we have some parking ratio information here. .88 parking spaces per bedroom. And then if you break it down with the 19,000 square foot of commercial space as well, then the number goes down to .71 spaces per bedroom if you allot the amount of space to Commercial that would be allowed, which would be 63. So again, the conceptual site plan in relation to the areas around, that's St. Mark's to the west, and you can see other older, smaller multifamily to the north. And then we have some conceptual site plans. Again, this is a rezone portion, so you are rezoning and allowing the district ordinance to be in place. And then the second part of a planned unit development is that the plan, the petitioner would come back with a development plan, meeting those requirements that you have set out. And in this case, they already have, obviously, quite a fully fleshed idea of what that would be, and that's what these elevations are. We have Pete Ellis on the right here, and you can see some cisterns on the first floor that work as part with the stormwater management on the site and would be taking in the rainwater from the roof and be used for watering inside the courtyard areas. And here we have Seventh Street on the left, and this is the southwest corner of the building. This is the biggest change from the 2018 petition, where there was previously another story on top of this, and I'll show you that here in a moment. But what they've done is taken away some units, removed that top corner, so that it would read as four floors here, even though that bottom level is actually a basement level. And they have also set back the module immediately to the east. This area, you can see, it's set further a bit back, and there's a small pocket park there. So here are the east and south elevations. Again, this is Pete Ellis, and then this is Longview. Seventh Street here, and the north side that would face the apartments to the north. We spoke about the comprehensive plan designation earlier, and here it is. You can see on the comprehensive plan map, and it is right at the edge of the area for the new hospital. We can discuss the district intent if you'd like. We do think that the PUD offers unique architectural design and range of benefits and features for the tenants. They also are, obviously, including housing stock that has much needed in Bloomington, including diverse housing with the inclusion of the workforce housing. And we believe that that is moving in the right direction of what the comprehensive plan is requesting, and especially being in the area of the Regional Activity Center and the edge of the focus area, that the density and size of this project, though larger than what is there now, is appropriate. So the Plan Commission forwarded this petition at their November 4 hearing with a positive recommendation with seven conditions that planning staff had put together, and we can discuss those if you would like. We also sent a memo to the Land Use Committee today with 28 questions that you all had submitted to staff with either answers or responses that we would be getting back, answers from other staff. So I'm happy to discuss those as well, if you want to talk about any of those in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Do we have a petitioner, our petitioner's representative to give a presentation? Mr. Fanyel.
Good evening. For the record, Steve Brehab with Smith, Brehab &amp; Associates, representing Tyler Curry of Curry Urban Properties. Tyler is here this evening as well. I don't want to take a lot of time and do a presentation to rehash all of the information that you probably already have in various packets and reports, but rather Tyler and I would like to respond to questions that I'm sure that you have of the petition.
All right, thank you. So we will go to questions from committee members who would like to begin. Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks, Ms. Scanlon. So could you speak a little more about how this project fits into our city goals and the comp plan goals?
Sure. Let me see here, just a moment. So basically, the project, so we are in kind of a weird position right now, where we have an approved comprehensive plan, and we also have a very recently approved UDO that hasn't gone into effect yet. Mr. Flaherty gave us some very helpful information that we will flesh out and present back to you all, pointing us toward the comparison of what this site could be zoned, if it were to go through the conversion map and not be a PUD. And I think some of the highlights of that are that this area, that Commercial Limited as it exists now, is going to be intensified in the new UDO in height. We are also getting away from DUE calculations in the new UDO and moving toward a more form and function, letting the form of the buildings kind of dictate what is approvable on a site as far as a number of units, that if it can meet the requirements of form, that then the number of units inside may not be as important as maybe the previous UDO has, in fact, thought that that was. So we do think that this project, you know, it has architecture that we do think is interesting. We, as a planning staff, are often looking for how buildings relate to pedestrians actually on the ground, how would it feel to be at these places? And we do think that this offers some interesting visual effects along the three major roadways. They're not all the same, so we think that that's a positive as well. And some of the, for example, the cisterns that they're using, that's kind of a unique thing we haven't really seen much of, and it sounds like that's another interesting kind of green feature that the UDO is pushing toward. Additionally, the UDO is encouraging workforce and affordable housing on new projects. This project is doing onsite workforce housing, so 10 percent of the beds at a maximum of 100 percent of area median income, and 5 percent of the beds at a maximum at 120 percent. That's really big for us as a department. We have not had very much, we have not had as much responsiveness to onsite units at the 99 years that this petitioner has put forward. So 15 percent total of the beds, and that is definitely something the UDO, new UDO and comprehensive plan are pushing for. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you. Okay, other questions from committee members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Point of order, is it appropriate to ask either petitioner or staff? This is this time? Okay, thank you. Yeah, a question for the petitioner, specifically with the parking onsite. How do you intend to charge for that, for residents? Is it included in the rent? Is it separate?
Good evening. My name is Tyler Curry. I'm the petitioner. To answer your question, the parking will be charged separately than the rent.
Okay. Will there be any particular allowance or difference for the people occupying the affordable units, the workforce housing?
At this time, I've not got that far in the parking rent structure, so I don't have a definite answer for you.
Okay.
It's not a requirement?
What's that?
It is not a requirement.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Volan.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to know about traffic counts on the roads nearby. Do you happen to have any sense of what traffic is like already on Pete Ellis, Longview, and other roads surrounding this project?
Sure. Let me see, let me throw to Steve and I'll look. I sent out some questions today, and I did get some responses from staff, so it's what Mr. Brehab has to say, and I'll, yeah.
We've not completed a traffic study at this.
No, I understand that. What I'm asking is, do we have, what was the last time we had traffic counts done on these streets, and what are those, what were those counts like?
Okay, so I do have some counts here that one of our employees was able to put together right here today at 5:00, but unfortunately, I don't see the year, so I'm not sure. But we will find that out, and I'll forward that information to you all probably tomorrow.
Well, the reason I ask is because I have a sense that when a new project like this goes up, there's a concern that it will increase the amount of traffic in the area. And so I also wonder if we have any sense of what traffic speeds are like in the area?
Sure.
And is there anything we can do to mitigate either of these streets from being de facto highways? Or, you know, anything in order to, I mean, like, I guess the bigger question I have is, how will this intersection and the streets around this project change with the advent of the new hospital? And, you know, like, does this provide any kind of connectivity through there? I'm not quite sure how to frame the question.
Okay, so when we spoke about this at Plan Commission, the interim transportation and traffic engineer at the time, I spoke with him about whether or not he felt a traffic study should be required at that stage. He did not, based on the numbers that he found at that time. We did include that as a condition of approval at the next stage, at the final plan stage, and that was something that we thought could be fleshed out here or at the council stage, that if there are thresholds that you all would not feel comfortable with, then we can set those and say, yes, you can do the traffic study at final plan, that's fine. If the outcomes do seem like they're going to be negative over a threshold that you all would not be comfortable with, then we could say, hey, you're going to have to come back or scale back. I mean, based on staff, based on staff review, he did not think that was appropriate at the time. But we wanted to put it in because it was a concern of some of the Plan Commissioners, and obviously, that is the main, that is one of two main concerns we've been hearing from the public. We have the AADT, the Annual Average Daily Traffic, on Pete Ellis north of Longview. The number that we have is 8,758 with a mean speed of 28 miles per hour. This, that's the type of data we have. So I have that for Pete Ellis north of Longview, south of Longview, and then Longview east of Pete Ellis. So we'll send you that information. All of the mean speeds are in the 20s, and the 85th percentiles are not more than 33 miles per hour. And I am not a traffic engineer, but I will send you the numbers that he, that we have, and also get a comment from our current traffic engineer on what that means.
Right. Well, I mean, I can say right now that mean speeds of 28 and top speeds of 33 miles an hour are, you know, not really conducive to a pedestrian environment. I guess I would ask this question of the petitioner. If the council saw a fit to require a narrowing of the streets around it, or a traffic light at Pete Ellis and Longview, if that was warranted, would the petitioner have a problem with putting those in as a reasonable condition of the project?
With regards to the, to a traffic signal, first, you'd have to do a warrant analysis and see if it actually met the.
Could you please speak closer to the microphone for the benefit of the public?
Yes.
Much better.
With regards to a traffic signal, you would have to do a warrant analysis and see if it met volume and delay and all those, all those various things before a signal could actually be installed. And with regards to narrowing of the streets, there was one other comment that I noticed in the list that Planning had sent regarding a protected bike lane, and it seems like that might be a balancing act. Are you, are you going to narrow the streets to the point to reduce speed, but.
Let me clarify.
Too far to give up the bike lane.
Let me clarify that we would narrow the street by either adding parallel parking, a bike lane, or similar. In other words, it wouldn't be a substantial cost. It's the marking of the street for parking, or maybe it would be more for a protected bike lane, but just kind of using those to narrow the street instead of physically building bump outs.
Well, and note that we're proposing backend parking on the project side of the street, so you could actually narrow the street by not building that parking so far into the property and thereby reduce the lane. So I think that's, I mean, that's something that could pretty easily be accomplished.
But do you understand my goal here of trying to sort of.
Sure.
Bring down speeds in this area to make it, and to make it more pedestrian-friendly through sidewalks and the like.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, I think that narrowing the street by utilizing the on-street parking that we plan to put in anyway would be a pretty simple thing to accomplish.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take my turn for a question. So the, the field that exists now in this location is known locally as the soggy field. So there's a lot of stormwater that accumulates there, and I would like to hear more about the plans to make sure that this development doesn't increase stormwater problems for the neighbors.
Okay. Right now, there is a, I don't remember the exact size, but there's a corrugated metal pipe that runs diagonally from northeast to southwest across this site, and it conveys runoff from areas to the north, down to the southwest, and then it flows on down south and eventually gets into Jackson Creek and the open channel by the mall. It storm sewer's been in place for many, 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 many years. When we develop this piece of property, we have to continue that conveyance of stormwater from the north to the south. And what we're planning to do is, is continue the pipe under the parking garage, so it'll go from north to south under the parking garage. And also, the intent is to construct the stormwater detention basin under the parking garage as well, by constructing a large concrete vault-type structure. And we've actually done that on several downtown apartment projects before, so building the stormwater detention basin under the parking structure isn't, isn't anything new. It's pretty simple to accomplish. So that's, that's the plan for that. And obviously, the underground detention structure has to be large enough to detain any increase in runoff that this site would generate. It can also be built large enough to detain additional runoff if there are problems downstream. So that would be something that we would work through with City of Bloomington Utilities.
All right, thank you. Mr. Volan, what is that?
That's 20 minutes of question period.
Really?
That was 20 minutes, yeah.
But the petitioner did not take more than two minutes for the initial presentation, so I believe we still have time before we go to public comment for more questions.
I'm just saying, it's true. I mean, I, that was, actually, I'm sorry, that was 20 minutes for total of the presentation.
There we go.
We have more time, you're right.
So we have.
Sorry, I missed track.
I believe we have another 20 minutes now to continue questions, and then we go to the public. So let's go through the round of individuals. Again, Ms. Rosenbarger, do you have further questions?
Yes, thank you. I think this might be for the petitioner. So I've heard from many residents that people are concerned about increased traffic, and I am always concerned about more people driving anywhere. So I want to ask a little bit about transit, and I know there's a bus route in front on Pete Ellis. I don't, I don't know where a bus stop is. Do you know if there's a bus stop right in front of this project? Or if not, would you be willing to work with Bloomington Transit to get a stop, then potentially put something in that is a shelter for people to wait and use that bus on both sides?
I know there's a, there is a bus stop to the south of this site, and then I know there is a bus stop to the north of this site. I don't think there's one immediate, exactly on this site. Well, in fact, I know there's not. But there, there's one to the south within walking distance and one to the north.
Closer to the mic, please.
Sorry. I would, I would assume if Bloomington Transit decides based on riders or volume, if a bus stop is necessary at this location, I would think that we could work with them to try to, to do something to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flaherty, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to just clarify, staff answered this in written questions, but to make sure that I understand correctly, any stormwater runoff post-development must not exceed current runoff from the site, and that will be administered by CBU as a requirement to build. Is that, is that correct? I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Pre-, post-development rates cannot exceed pre-development rates.
Thank you.
Mr. Volan, do you have another question?
I'm still thinking about it.
Can I clarify, so the, in response memo to your questions, so that is usually, so Mr. Brehab does have an idea of what they will do, but that will be flushed out at the second stage of the development plan stage, the exact details, and they would have to have that approved by CBU before they could start building, basically?
Thank you.
Mr. Volan, are you ready, or shall I go ahead?
Go ahead.
So I have a question about traffic. There are a couple of citations, let me just find it here. So Bloomington Municipal Code, as far as PUDs, says, "One thing we need to consider is whether the proposal will cause undue traffic congestion, and again, it can be adequately served by the existing or programmed public facilities." And then, in addition to that concern, we have, in our UDO, when it talks about PUDs, the development will offer one or more of the following advantages, and one of those is to counteract urban monotony and congestion on streets. So given these two citations from our municipal code, and given the number of parking spaces in this facility, I wonder if staff could address why they feel there will not be congestion on the streets?
Sure. So when we spoke, when I spoke about it with the traffic engineer at the time, based on the existing counts on the roads and the number of units going in, those, he, that is why he said, I don't think we need to require it at that time. I can find out more about, I don't know if there was, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I mean, there, just from other exposure, I guess, there are more than one, there's more than one, there are numerous ways in and out of this development, obviously, because it has the three, three frontages that lead to major thoroughfares, Third Street to the south, Bypass to the west, 10th Street to the north, that, that I think that that has an effect, but I can get you more on it having less of an effect on the surrounding traffic, but I can get more, provide more information about that, ask the traffic engineer to provide more information for next time, if that's okay.
Okay. Would the developer like to speak to the traffic and why they feel like there would not be a negative impact on neighbors?
Really, just to reiterate what Jackie had said, one of, one of the things that you always look at in site development is, how many ways do you have that you can disperse traffic? I mean, are you sending every single person down, down one street? Or would we be sending every single person down Longview? No. They can, they can take Longview over to Seventh and out to the bypass, or they can go up Pete Ellis to 10th Street. So there's, there's multiple, multiple routes in and out from the site. It's not all, not everyone is directed to one access point and one exit point.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple. First question is, did you ever think about connecting Seventh Street to Pete Ellis on the north side of the project to create more connectivity? Did anyone consider that?
We did not, no.
Okay.
Just given that, given that it's connected to Longview a half a block to the south.
Nevertheless, it's going to be several hundred people living there. There are neighborhoods with fewer people in an area like that. It's, it's not a big deal. A bigger deal, I think, is this, the, the jam room, the screen in the garage, the amphitheater as a part of the site. I wonder if the petitioner can talk about, you know, what the thought is behind it and how much noise it might make, what should neighbors expect, I mean, where will those be on the site, and how worried should neighbors be about noise?
So let me see if I can shed a little bit of light on that. Our thought process was, is not to create a circus environment. We're trying to think outside the box. And we live in a community of the arts, right? And we.
And, and we, we stress that. And so, we live in one of the, we live in a community with one of the top music schools in the world. Using those as an example and as our motive, why not create an environment to where people like that might want to display their talents? Or on a nice Saturday or Sunday afternoon, set out in what the quote-unquote amphitheater area is and play their instrument?
Where in the building would that, that be?
Jackie, can you point to?
Yeah, the amphitheater is here.
Top left.
In the northwest corner, and then the room, I believe, is adjacent.
So the northwest corner of the property, and that green spit out there?
Oops. Yeah.
Very, very top north, top left, top of the corner.
Got it. Okay. Please continue. Thank you.
Okay. So, having said that, it's, it's not something that we're going to promote. We're not in the concert promoting business. I don't see this as an amped-up sort of display of, of, of music talent. It's, it's not anything that's going to be promoted, and people are going to attend, and we're going to sell refreshments, and so on and so forth. It's just an area that we thought would be nice to designate for our residents and/or maybe a resident has part of a music club, and these people can come over and play, and entertain people in that area, much like they would at Bryant Park.
You mean like busking? Or would it be amplified at all? Would there be?
No, I'm saying, I don't, we're not going to set up an amplified service. So the fact that it's loud and we're creating this circus environment is just not true. We're trying to offer something different to the community. If they don't want it, we'll take it out. It's not that big of a deal.
Okay. What about, do you have, you have planned to have movie screen in the parking garage?
Yeah, so, along the same line. I mean, technology has given us, you know, many instruments to play music and watch movies, and there's little devices that you can set on top of a desktop that will project a movie. And so we thought, why not, or how cool would it be to have a area on a wall to where people could be sitting out there on a, a nice evening and play a movie? And maybe it has sound, but you're going to be inside the corridor of the building, and who possibly could hear that?
I, I, that's why I'm asking. I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
Yeah. You also say there's a room where bands can practice?
It's, again, yeah, it's a jam room. It's, it's the same sort of approach. I mean, if you're a music student and you live in this building, and you and your buddies down the hall want to go to this room that will be set up as a sound room?
In other words, soundproofed room.
Yeah, yeah. Soundproof room, go in there and play.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have some time left for further questions, if there are any, from council members. Any further questions before we go to the public?
Yeah, I do have one.
Okay. Well, let's go, go through the same order again. Ms. Rosenbarger?
Ms. Vanlon, I did ask this in the online, in the questions too, and I don't know if you've had a response from the transportation team, but do you have an idea if a bike lane is feasible? Because there is not one there right now. Is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay. So, did they respond?
So, I only was able to speak briefly with one person, and I will get you more of an answer later. This is one of those issues we've discussed in the past, where I do, I think that, I have to verify, but I think that a bike lane is, the type of facility that a bike lane could be incorporated in is planned for Pete Ellis, but there are multiple types. But I believe that there is a path on the east side of Pete Ellis, and that I'm not sure if we have determined that there would be enough of a benefit to put in this chunk of bike lane here when there is the path on the east side. It's something we've discussed in the past, so I need to clarify that. I did not have time to do that this afternoon, but I will get back to you about that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Flaherty?
I have two, if that's okay. One's just a follow-up on what Ms. Rosenbarger just asked, which is that I had the transportation plan pulled up of the bike facilities.
Yes.
And specifically, the, a side path and bike lane both are anticipated
Okay, great.
North-south on Pete Ellis. If planning and transportation deems that that is desirable at this time, would that, would petitioners be open to that being included as a reasonable condition for improving that portion of Pete Ellis in front of?
Oh, yeah.
We're already planning a wide sidewalk, side path zone in front of the building on the west side, if you will. So I would think that would, would meet the requirements of the side path, and we're also widening and improving the side path along, Longview and on Seventh as well. So I, I would think that would create a continuous side path. I'd, I-
Yeah, I do think, I'll clarify. I think those are terrific elements to the plan, and, and part of the neighborhood greenway corridor that, that extent, continues to extend eastward on Longview, but the, the comprehensive plan, incorporating the transportation plan, does call for multi-use side path and bike lane, north-south on Pete Ellis, as a north-south connector between Third and between 10th. So that's, I see that as a bit different in terms of its connectivity.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm not clear. Are you asking, would we build one south of this site, all the way down to Third or to 10th?
No, um, along the property, between Longview and Seventh, essentially, but not attached to Seventh, between the eastern front of the property, if, if-
Yeah, and, and again, I, I think that's what we're doing, between the, the parking and, and the front of the building.
Okay. We'll get clarification on that.
Yeah, we'll get, I can get clarification on that. We, we did discuss it, you know, it's one of those where you do a chunk, is that, does that, is that beneficial?
Right.
Or do we, should we wait? Is there something else we can do and wait? But I will get clarification on that from our transportation.
Thank you. Thank you both. The, the other question was specific to the shadow cast by the building on the, by the proposed building on the north side. I know there were some concerns among residents who live in the apartments to the north. In particular, there's one building that is fairly close to the property line on the south, to, for, for the property north of, of this PUD. I know the setback has been, I think, moved 15 feet back from the initial proposal to, to address that in part, but I'm wondering if you know with much specificity, how much, I, I can't get a good sense of, of what exactly the impact will be. There are, there are apartments in that building that have rear, south-facing, it looks like, little courtyards or balconies, maybe on the ground floor, and it's unclear to me if that's going to be in shade 100% of the time now, or maybe just for a portion of winter. Do you have any sense of that?
I, I can get you that information. Actually, we did a shadow study with the original proposal that was rejected.
Mm-hmm.
But the building height and massing, I think, has changed since that time, but it's something that we could update to, to reflect the current design proposition.
I think that would be helpful, if you could, in, in addressing concerns
Sure.
About light or a lack thereof to the north among neighbors.
Yeah, I think we could, we could update what was submitted previously.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit about how the parking ratio was chosen, either by the petitioner or by staff. It, it seems high, especially for an area that's increasingly, I mean, it's a increasingly dense area. There's a grocery now. It should be walkable, especially if there's a, a bus that goes by there, which I think there is. Any, does anyone have a comment on the 88% parking ratio?
We, staff, the department did not choose that ratio. That was proposed, but I don't know that, I'm not sure if Mr. Curry has that information tonight, or if that's something he would have to-
Mr. Curry?
Dig up.
Councilman Volan, I don't, I don't have a, a good answer. I don't have a formula that I came up with. I, I'd like to, with all due respect, come back to you if we have this meeting again and give you a better answer.
Well, I mean, let me just characterize the question by saying, would you consider less parking in the building if it meant you could put more units in it?
Probably.
Because, like, I would ask you to go to, any one of several projects lately that have built giant garages, and there, those, a lot of that parking goes unused all the time.
Right.
You know, do you have any particular preference about parking? You already agreed, and I commend you for breaking out parking from rent. That's step one. But I mean, what if you've built too much?
Well, then, there's, there's an opportunity of lost revenue, because it costs money to also build those parking spaces that sit empty, right? My, my only concern would be, and again, I'd like to give you a, a better answer, is that we are smack dab in the middle of the regional academic center, development center. And this is probably this region, this regional academic overlay
Health center.
Is probably the single most dense area in the city, maybe second to some places on IU's campus, but that, that corridor that I'm talking about, where this land is, is a very dense area. And so, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that because of who we are marketing this to, that these people are going to drive to work somewhere. Now, because of the connectivity of this site, and we've put a lot of emphasis on connectivity, pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, bus-friendly, we've really put everything we have into it with regards to that, it, we cannot assume that everybody's going to drive their car or have a car. So, there are some spaces that could go unused. I mean, if you're going to work at the hospital, you don't have to have a car if you live at this place. There's a bus route, you can ride your bike, you can walk.
Well, that, but you're making my case for me, that if that's the case, then-
I'll stop talking then.
That much less, that much less parking you need, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Which is something we can talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask a question about the workforce housing component. In the staff materials that we received, it said, I think, 10% would be marketed to or made available to people who are at 100% AMI, and then another 5% available to people who are at 120% AMI. But then we received some materials via email yesterday from the developer that said 100% and 80% were the, the figures. So, Mr. Crowley, maybe you could confirm what has actually been agreed to?
Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. I'm not sure what materials you're referring to, because I haven't seen those. What we, what we talked to, Doris and I, Doris Sims, who's Hand Director, and I spoke with the developer about was what's detailed in this packet. So, we are looking at workforce housing as stretching between 80% of AMI all the way up to 120%. And the reason we've created these sort of sub-tiers within it is so that we counteract the possibility that a developer would go out and seek people only at the higher end of the, of the range. So we want to make sure that there's eligibility at the lower end of the income range. So it's a little confusing. The, the rents are set at the 80% threshold for that first tier, but the eligibility is between 80% and 100%. Maybe that's where the confusion is. And similarly, in the second tier, the rents are set pegging to the 100%, but the eligibility is up to 120%. Does that make sense?
Yes, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay.
And let's go ahead and move on to public comment. So if anybody from the public would like to make a comment, we'll have 20 minutes. And I know that there's a group of neighbors that might make a, a joint presentation, so-
Matter of fact, I'd point out that there's four members of the public here to speak, and-
They usually get five minutes apiece, so we can just give them the 20 minutes. They can present as they see fit.
We have a PowerPoint, but-
I'll, I'll help.
Mr. Crowley is coming to the rescue.
I'll, I'll claw at my chair.
We'll start the time when the presentation starts.
Great.
I'm the, I represent the Park Ridge Neighborhood Association, and we've developed a PowerPoint with some points to make and some questions, et cetera. And we've divided up our presentation, half of it for me and half of it from my neighbor, Connie Glenn. So, first, I want to thank a couple of the commissioners who, committee chairs who helped us develop this so that we could kind of not repeat ourselves too much, et cetera. So we did that last night, and again, I appreciate it. And congratulations to our new city council, or our new members there. Hi, Kate. Basically, what, in a word, density. Our overarching message here is about density. And when we talk about density, we did some research, our researcher, Jim Glenn, did some research and looked at the population in Bloomington as a whole, and looked at our area in terms of population, and we found that the average density per square mile in Bloomington is 3,600 people. In our area, which we're basically bordering Cambridge Square, Longview, to the bypass and Smith Road, that square mile, actually, it's .8. It's not quite a square mile. It, it adds up to 200, 2,375 apartments, 100 condos at roughly three people per, and not even putting the homes in it, we're at a density of 7,475 people. So that's roughly, that's twice the density of the average square mile in Bloomington. The petitioner kind of made that point, that it's a very dense, it's a very dense area. And this is before this development gets put in, of course. So, the points that we're going to make all kind of relate to density. So that's kind of our, our overarching concern is density. Go ahead, next slide. We, one of the points we wanted to make is about building height, and we do appreciate that the petitioner brought the height down, that's great. But we, in an ideal world, again, relating to density, we would like to see them look more toward the comprehensive plan, which on page 101 of the comprehension, comprehensive plan, the redevelopment within this district should be encouraged to grow vertically, possibly two or three-story buildings, not four, okay? So two-to-three-story buildings. I'm glad that Matt brought this up, that I think we do need to update our shade survey to definitely look at that, especially with our Cambridge Square neighbor just to the north. They do have patios and balconies that look at this property, and even though it has been set back a little bit more, those neighbors are concerned about sunlight and just having that, you know, building so close to their property. So, we do need to look at updating that shade survey, et cetera, shade information. Let's see. Let's go to the next slide. Noise. So we, we, again, this is a neighborhood, this is a community. We, we had an interesting talk last night about even starting to develop, maybe with the city's help, of creating a new way of looking at our area of Park Ridge and all the apartments around us, and this development, and the, and Cambridge Square, and becoming sort of a Longview-Cambridge Square-Pete Ellis community, rather than a Park Ridge Neighborhood Association. So, even in our Neighborhood Association, I must admit, I reach out to the apartments. They're renters, but they're still members of our community, they're still valued, they're, they don't, and not everyone has to be a homeowner to be important and to be recognized in our, in our neighborhood. So, again, with noise, we're concerned about some of the amenities that are being offered, that are being mentioned about the public jam room, the outdoor movie screen, amphitheater. I, you know, I, I understand, it's, it's a cool idea, it is cool thinking of it outside of the box, but again, representing the neighbors, we need to think about how that impacts the crowding, the noise, whatever, with neighbors that live right next to this area. So, I am, I am, I appreciate Mr. Curry's offer to just, well, okay, maybe we should just pull that out. I'm a musician, I'm a, I'm a, I go to the music school all the time to see performances, I appreciate that, but when you've got it right next to, you know, where people are living all the time, and maybe they are senior citizens that can't get away from the noise, et cetera, we really need to be more respectful of that. So, we're concerned about this public jam room, we're very concerned about the outdoor movie screen in terms of volume and light, okay? And then also the amphitheater stage. I know, working in the residence hall system on campus, we have agreements of how those spaces are used in terms of applica, amplification of music, how many people are there, what kind of security is involved. If that should be the case, those things all need to be in place. Otherwise, somebody's going to go out there, if there's electric, they're going to wire up their amp, they're, you know, they're offended. their amp, you know, their offender amp, and jam out. That's kind of what the space is for. But again, this is a neighborhood, they're neighbors close by, we need to be respectful of them. So, again, it's a quality of life issue. Let's see. Also with noise, we need to be respectful that Penny Lane Daycare is right across the street. I know Ron's grandson or granddaughter is right there, we need to think about that in terms of noise. We need to think, or just be respectful, we have St. Mark's Church, a close-by congregation that's right there, and of course, the Cambridge Square residents to the north that are so close. So, again, noise is something that we're really cognizant of and concerned about. Okay, go ahead. And fifth, traffic. We really, really, really need to look at a traffic study. I'm kind of, I'm really surprised that a traffic study hasn't been done by now. It'd be nice to have that now, instead of waiting till final approval with city council, but we definitely need a traffic study. Believe me, for us that live in our neighborhood, traffic has been something that we have been struggling with, at least in my 29 years in Park Ridge, we have. I sometimes am not so well-liked because I'm Mr. Speed bump for my neighborhood. I'm the guy that put the speed bumps in. But that was back when my kids were little, and that's when we wanted to slow traffic down, and then, you know, discourage cut-through driving and things like that. We still have lots of folks that jump those speed bumps and don't seem to care about the bottom of their car. But we've got speed bumps on Morning View, we've got speed bumps on Longview, we've tried to mitigate the, they still don't slow down, it's helped a little bit, but in terms of traffic, we would absolutely, I think a requirement would be to need that four-way stoplight. Unfortunately, that four-way stoplight at Pete Ellis and Longview, I think that's just a given, especially if we're gonna put in this many residents in that area. So we do, also about speed, I'm glad Steve had brought up the fact that those speeds of 28 to 33 miles per hour don't translate into a safe place where a pedestrian feels safe walking in a sidewalk, or even, I know a lot of our students in that area sometimes don't walk on the sidewalk, they'll walk in the bike lane, or they'll walk on the curb and things like that. So that, that's a concern in terms of personal safety of pedestrians. And then also with traffic, people that come in and out of that Penny Lane Daycare, they already struggle to get out of it once they get in, whether it's a right-in or left-out, or left-in or left-out. The buses, we've got good bus traffic, I'm glad to do that, but school buses go up and down that all the time. We've got a lot of cars, we've just got a lot of traffic that we've been struggling with for many years, and adding this many residents, adding this many cars to the equation just doesn't seem to be the right way to go. It's just such a concentrated area, as well as, we're a little discouraged that Indot still has not addressed the issues of 10th Street and some of the connectivity around that area, 10th Street and 3rd Street, and how busy they are.
I just wanted to let you know, 10 minutes is up, so we have 10 more minutes.
Okay. So I'm at my last slide. So we are concerned about the traffic counts, et cetera, and so we would love to see a traffic count study, and that, I think, would give us a better amount of information to be able to make an assessment of whether this should be approved or not. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. I'm Connie Cook-Glen, I'm a resident. I live on Longview, as does Steve, and I teach in the music school. So, thank you for your comments about what a wonderful cultural area we are. I would like to begin by reading a letter by a woman named Mary Grogan, and I will read part of it, just because she brings us a different point of view about traffic and traffic concerns. She says, "I'm Mary Grogan, the Vice President of the Barrington Place Homeowners Association. I have lived in this location since 1999. At Barrington Place, we have the unique issue of only being able to access Bloomington via 10th Street and the Pete Ellis Drive intersection without looping all the way to Smith Road in the direction of Unionville. Our direct opposition is to the proposed increase in density for the Curry Project is that what is already a very dangerous and congested intersection at 10th and Pete Ellis would become nearly impossible to navigate. Since 1999, we have seen the dramatic increase in traffic throughout Bloomington, but specifically in the forenamed intersection. Daily, we see near accidents as motorists pass illegally through the intersection to get around vehicles waiting to turn. We also see a great deal of pedestrians and buses at this intersection, which has bus stops on either side of 10th Street and multitudes of pedestrians crossing. While there is a large number of accidents, for every accident which does occur, we see a multitude of near misses. It is such a problem in its present state that the idea of adding to that congestion with the proposed increase is unimaginable, and I personally believe it would be at some point prove fatal with the number of dangers present. I would further venture that a traffic camera taking license plates and sending tickets in the mail would likely pay for itself and its installation within fractions in very short time while increasing the safety before any fatalities do occur." So she's really talking about that 10th Street area, but we feel that the entire area is impacted by development at 7th and Pete Ellis. All right, go ahead and change that. So the next thing is just to imagine what they have already discussed, and perhaps just to underscore that this is a very marshy area, and that we have drainage problems all over Park Ridge. We have a backup of water all the way to 3rd Street, and then in some houses, particularly on Morningside, the streets in front of those. You may have noticed, or perhaps you haven't been through the area, but the city spent quite a lot of money digging trenches through those yards. We don't have sidewalks on any of Park Ridge, and there are trenches that are now built, and they built them one time and it completely failed. So this is an indication of a water problem. And then they rebuilt them, and they are working better now, but our water buildup needs to really be taken very seriously. We feel that this development is going to impact that. I'm glad to hear about the cisterns and the underwater tank, perhaps all of my worries are in vain. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, again, you'll have to click it again. This is probably the most important part of what I have to say. It's that we do feel, as Steve said, that we have a neighborhood, and that all of the residents living in this area should be able to expect the same quality of life that they currently experience. Go ahead and click again. Thank you. It has a great deal of diversity, possibly more diversity than any other neighborhood in Bloomington. And I did say to our commissioners yesterday that we, you know, we hear about so many, the west side, the near west side, the near south side, the downtown neighborhoods, we never hear about our neighborhood as a core neighborhood, although perhaps we will now. But this is a neighborhood that serves many, many kinds of people. And I'd like to ask the developers to think about supporting the people in that area instead of completely changing the identity and the function of it. Go ahead to the next slide. You'll have to click a couple times. One more. So one of the things that we think is pretty special about our neighborhood is that we have residential housing for low-income, for high apartments, for the elderly, for differently-abled, for families, for all different kinds of levels of families. And we think that we should be able to maintain a really fine lifestyle for those people. As Steve mentioned earlier, there is a walk, within walking-distance grocery store, there's also Target, there's also a pharmacy, all of these things within walking distance. We would like to maintain the quality of the life for those people. I don't think there's anything else on the east side in that kind of situation that supplies the needs of all of those people. So I'm asking, what can the developer do to support the residents of that area? You can go ahead. And then I have questions just for the Land Use Committee, just to think about. Do you feel that what we're identifying is inadequate? Of course, that's our opinion. Inadequate infrastructure on 10th will negatively affect the roads. Can we find out the Indot plans? Can we figure out what's happening up there? Is this premature? Is there a cart and horse problem? And if so, what about getting that infrastructure in place first? Certainly, we know that the area is changing. We have other empty lots, there's the Kmart, there are lots of things in that area that will be changing with the impact of the hospital. We've heard that there will be a great need for medical offices, we've heard that there will be a great need for medical transient workers, and I heard that on the initial plan for this property, but I'll have to say, I didn't hear that tonight, I heard about music students. And it worries me a little bit, because I think once we start talking about students, then we have a different goal that is incompatible with the neighborhood I've been describing to you. One more, this is it. So we're asking you just to really carefully consider approving a development unless it is dramatically scaled back. And we'd also like you to go back to the GLIC letter, which I think all of you have, it's Louis Wagner, but it has some points that still have not been addressed. Some of them have been, and we're really appreciative that they have been. I wondered about open space. Okay, there's an amphitheater, that sounds great, but it's right next to the other apartment building, can it be on the other side? Can that be a yoga exercise place instead of an amphitheater? I mean, there are other ways to think about it. They noted that there was significantly less open space than is required by the city. They also asked a good question, I thought, which was, what are you gonna do if it ends up being all students? I mean, we can't really control who applies to live there, right? But it is possible that that would not be very compatible with the neighborhood as I've described it to you. And then also just the density of, if we're looking at first-floor retail, I mean, I'm personally completely opposed to back-end parking, I know others in this room are in favor of it, but I drive that road every day, and I see what could, actually, I walk that road almost every day. I cannot imagine what that would do to it, but I am very much in favor of the bicycle paths or other things that would slow down the traffic. But I think there is that issue of what does retail space do in that kind of a space in the most dense area of Bloomington, or possibly the most, as they alluded to when they were creating their argument, and why we would want to increase that density rather than create a plan that does some increasing in density, but also has really positive things to support the neighborhood. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. You had about two minutes remaining, if you want to finish up, something, or? Oh, thank you. And just to note, I never, I received the GLIC letter, but it was not in a readable format, so if that could be forwarded again, that would be appreciated.
I would just sum up again, to look at density, and I wouldn't, I think we're premature to even look at approval at this point, there's too many unknowns with the traffic study that's needed, the shade study that's needed, to possibly discuss removing the amphitheater and some of those things. So I think if we take it a little slower and, you know, look at this development and scale it back a little bit so it fits in with our, what would be a workable plan for density. And also to address what Connie mentioned, making sure that this is for medical professional, traveling medical folks, and it doesn't become a student development, basically. Even though, you know, the hospital is where the nursing school's gonna be, I mean, that's focused with IU and education, but at the same time, my understanding of this development is that it would house medical professionals and people that work in the hospital. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? We'll go back to committee members. Are there additional questions at this point by committee members? Yes, Councilmember Volin.
Ms. Porter, I see you're here, can I ask you a question? Thank you. The public said that there were many unknowns, and that more plans need to be made, but I mean, I understand that Plan Staff and the Plan Commission, they're familiar with the comprehensive plan, which has been in place since this proposal was made, right?
Correct.
Do you think that this proposal meets the city's plans for what's appropriate development?
Yes, we do feel that this meets the city's plans. I've said numerous times that there's two things that everyone dislikes, sprawl and density. We have a new hospital that's under construction now. Bloomington has the highest cost of housing in the state, and that's because of our lack of supply. We have a low supply of housing that is directed towards professionals. This is not a student-oriented housing development, although this is coming in under the new, or under the old UDO rules. The new UDO does specify what student housing is, and that's multifamily housing that has more than a third of the bedrooms, or the units with three bedrooms, or has any units that are four bedrooms. This does not fit that criteria. This area of the city is going to transform, and that's in the comprehensive plan as well, with it being a regional activity center. We have to plan carefully for this, but I think that expecting the area to remain as it has for many, many years is unrealistic. So we do support this development, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. We are looking at a project that will have 344 bedrooms, so we're talking about an additional 344 people. I don't think that's going to, that's not going to ruin the neighborhood, it's not gonna ruin that section of town. The traffic's, I don't believe is going to, the traffic studies are going to show that it will be something that will present hazards to the area. That is something that the petitioner has agreed to study, and we will get more information from our engineering department as well. So that's kind of a long-winded answer to your question.
But it's exactly what I wanted to know. In general, I think that the neighbors would benefit from being able to see what, I mean, I would encourage them to watch the Plan Commission meeting, of course, if they haven't already, but I think there's some disconnect between, I mean, I know that your staff applied the comprehensive plan when considering this project, right?
Yes.
Maybe I should ask this, if you had to name one thing that was the biggest problem with the project, that, you know, the biggest hang-up, what aspect of it might that have been?
Well, the difference between the petition when they came through in 2018 and now is quite significant. They are offering 15% of the units to be affordable to workforce income. That's a considerable benefit that's permanently rent-restricted. And also the green benefits, which I think they've gone into some detail with that for the storm water runoff and with their landscaping plan, and they have come a long way from where they were initially in addressing green factors to the building. They also did scale it back, and we were initially concerned, and we know it's gonna look very different from what is there now. It was bound to, it was bound to happen.
Sure. Last question I have is the drainage concerns, like how, I'm gonna save that question for later, I'll ask drainage questions later. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, my question is, Ms. Porter, am I correct in remembering that a traffic study will be required before final approval of the plan? It'll come not currently at the rezoning stage, but rather at the plan stage?
We will ask for a traffic study, yes.
And if that comes back with information that the traffic engineers at the city find problematic, the petitioner would then be required to address that in some meaningful way in order to get a plan approval?
Yes, we'd have to look at some remediation methods, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have any questions?
I don't.
All right, I have a question for the petitioner. All right, I have a question for the petitioner. And in the, Ms. Porter mentioned green building elements, and in your statement that was submitted with the petition, under the heading "Green Building Elements Planned," the second bullet point, it says "Energy Star Appliances slash Energy-Efficient Building Materials slash LEED compliant." Now, if you're going after LEED certification, that would be great. What does this mean, LEED compliant?
That's a great question. We're not going to go for LEED certification because of the administrative cost to do that and to, to do that in perpetuity. It's just, it takes a lot of money and a lot of time. So what we are doing instead of LEED certification is even better, and that's going for the FITWELL certification. Having said that, just because we're not going for LEED certification doesn't mean that we can't use LEED practices, like using Energy Star, Energy Star appliances, like using building materials that promote energy efficiency, a white roof versus a black roof, and the windows, and siding, and so on and so forth. So even though we're not doing a LEED certification, we still have the intent to build responsibly and use those sort of materials that promote that. The FITWELL certification will exceed, will do more for the building and its tenants than a LEED certification will for the building, when it's all said and done.
But the FITWELL certification is, if I understand it correctly, I, okay, I need to phrase this as a question. Does the FITWELL certification reduce the greenhouse gas emissions of construction and operation of the building?
No, it does not.
I wanted to ask the staff, because I believe it came from the Planning and Transportation Department, about the back-end angled parking and why that was recommended. If I'm wrong about it coming from staff, we can have the petitioner answer.
Yes, we did receive your question. We don't have a response from the Transportation Section of our department as of yet, but, and I'll, I'll just be honest here, I'm old-school. I know that we've been, we have been talking about piloting back-end parking because it is a best practice, and it is, it's safer to pull out. I've been practicing backing my car into parking spaces so that I could try and get used to it. But I'm not the, I'm not the expert, so I would prefer to have one of my more experienced team members get back with you on that. But my understanding is that it's a, it's a much safer way of, of parking, I'll buy, you know, have to, a little bit getting used to.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brehob, you wanted to add something?
Could I just make one comment? And I do not mean any disrespect by this, but why are we so afraid of back-end parking? And I mean no disrespect by this, but for the exact reasons that Terry said, it is so much safer to pull out.
Well, could you explain that to us as, as a way of answering my question? It's not for you to ask a question of us, but as a way of answering my question, please respond.
I believe it is a much safer means of on-street parking. When I park at the courthouse currently, which, which is angled-in parking, and I want to back out, I do so blindly. I can't see cars coming either direction, so, and I'm sure that some of you do this too. You put your car in reverse, and you start creeping out, and you think, I'm either going to pull out or I'm going to get hit, because you just can't see with cars parked next to you.
I've actually been in an accident because of that.
Yes, and the back-end parking, I can tell you, I can tell you a place in Indianapolis that probably has much higher traffic volume than Pete Ellis Drive, and that's on Michigan Avenue. Michigan Avenue, right in front of the Rath Skeller in downtown Indianapolis, has back-end parking, and it works beautifully. It is safe. When you start to pull out, instead of having to get the whole back end of your car, well, three-quarters of your car out before you can see either direction if someone else is coming, you get the nose of your car out. And now, all of a sudden, I can see the, up the road this way, and I can see the road this way. I can see if a pedestrian is coming. I can see if there's a bike coming. It's just, in my personal opinion, and from having used back-end parking, I feel it's a much safer means of parking, and I would love to see Bloomington try it.
And Mr. Brehob, just for the record, you are an engineer. What kind of engineer?
Civil.
A civil engineer.
At least I try to be civil.
All right, I appreciate that. Additional questions?
Yeah, I have three.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. One, two related to the garage, and one related to the roof. I believe Mr. Ferry just mentioned the desire to use a white or green roof. Would it be appropriate to include that as, and forgive me if this is already part of it, the, the planning and development, but would it be reasonable to include that as a reasonable condition for approval, that you would use either a white or a green roof, perhaps in line with the standards that are outlined in the new UDO? Has that been discussed already?
You're asking me if it's a reasonable request?
Yes.
I believe so.
If that hasn't been specified, basically.
It has not been specified.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
It could be one or the other. It's going to be a flat roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Related to the parking garage, two questions. One, is there going to be electric vehicle charging stations at all? And if so, will they be priority? And two, I'll let you answer that one first.
As long as you have enough priority points, we'll let you have priority in charging your car. But no, there is going to be electric charging stations. I don't know if they're going to be priority. I figure they will be on the front end of the garage entrance. That seems to be where those types of things are most common, but we are going to have that.
Okay. And the final question related to the garage would be that, I think, in terms of attractiveness of the building and the engaging, how engaging it is to the pedestrian realm, the south facade, where the garage is, is somewhat lacking as compared to the rest of the building. And I'm wondering if you have thoughts about that and how it might be addressed. Obviously, with, with some of the municipal garages in town, we've pursued artwork of various kinds. Additionally, with the Morton Street Garage, of course, that garage is wrapped by, on three sides, by housing units or offices. I believe Mr. Volin mentioned, you know, if you reduce the number of parking spaces, could you include units on that south facade in a way that would be more attractive? Are these things even considered?
So I think in addressing the comments about the attractiveness of the parking garage entrance, I get it. We're open to suggestions. I mean, you kind of hit on one already in the Morton, what you've done on the Morton Street Garage. The new city garage over here, is that the Morton Street Garage? There's two, actually. So we are open to implementing art or some sort of, I won't call it a, any sort of live wall or anything like that, but anything to take away from the less attractive part of the entrance. And what they did on the new city-county garage, I think is attractive.
And would you be willing to work with Sean Starwitz, the Assistant Director for the Arts of the City, on developing plan for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I think we actually reached out to him early on, because there's some parts of the building on the exterior that we want to implement some art, like they did at the Graduate Hotel most recently. I think that stuff is really attractive and interesting, and I think we reached out to him early on about working with them.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions?
No, I have garage questions as well, but they were just answered.
I think we're good.
All right. If there are no additional questions, then we will move to council comments or comment from the committee members.
Four minutes, five minutes? Three?
Well, I wasn't going to put a limit, but I think, I mean, we definitely have a hard stop at 10:00. I think we can easily make that. So certainly no more than, than five minutes per committee member to, and I would like to ask my colleagues to focus on any possible reasonable conditions that they might attach or, or seek to develop to attach to this proposal, if they would vote for it in any, in any version. So why don't we start on my right with Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Okay, thank you. I don't have my conditions exactly written up, but I'll get to them as I'm speaking. First, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Akers and Ms. Glenn for the presentation. I really appreciate the time you spent on it, and that you're offering solutions to issues that you presented, and that you're not opposed to the idea of adding housing to your neighborhood. I know that density proposed on the site is higher than surrounding properties, but I think this type of dense infill development is encouraged when we look at what's around it in terms of infrastructure and goods and services. So I really like that we have proximity to amenities here. We can walk to multiple grocery stores, daycare, the mall, restaurants, jobs, and potentially the hospital, where that will be a quick bus ride, bus ride away. I do think density, if done right, means increased access to these amenities and increased safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and also encouraging those modes of transportation, which is very important to me. I know this is a growing urban area, and I really like the onsite workforce housing in this connected space. I know that's something that we don't see a lot here in Bloomington right now, so I think this is a really big deal, that this developer is actually putting those units in the project. I do think this area is not without faults, that you all mentioned some of them, that the water is an issue still, I think, and the stormwater is concerning to me. I mean, the, the area in general is not as walkable as I would like to see, crossing Third Street, kind of going off on a tangent, but crossing Third Street is not pleasant. Walking on Third Street is not pleasant, so those are things that I would like to see change over time as we do add density to the mall, the mall area. A resident who emailed said that her family was drawn to the neighborhood for its proximity to shopping and IU and how pedestrian-friendly it is. And I am of the mindset that when we really like the place we live, we should create opportunities for more people to live there, especially in walkable neighborhoods, so they can experience that too. I think this project does aim, does work with the comprehensive plan well, and even the new UDO, since we're sort of in a middle period right now, that offers diverse housing and much-needed addition to our housing stock in general. I did watch the Plan Commission meeting on this, and just a small bit about the back-end parking. Mr. Copper, Planning and Transportation Engineer, did say it's a lower crash risk, risk than head-in, and that our code allows it. And I think it is a good opportunity to try, just, I think you have 15 spots in there, and I think it's a good opportunity to introduce that in Bloomington. I think that also helps slow traffic at intersections where people are pulling in and out. So some things that I would want to see here, you know, it's no surprise, I'm really focused on encouraging different modes of transportation, so bike and ped, so making sure that we have good bus stop shelters for folks, because we really want to encourage people to bus to the hospital and medical providers once it's there. We really want to make sure we have bike lanes to connect folks to our bike infrastructure, so getting to the Seventh Street tunnel easily and safely, I think is a big deal. I like the new sidewalks and the width of those, I would say, so I like that. I do think it is a big building, so making it, I like that the appearance of it looks like different buildings. The parking garage is the biggest problem to me, but that has been addressed tonight, that it's not really interesting for a pedestrian to walk on that long view side. So making that a more appealing walk to encourage foot traffic would be important to me. I do want to, you know, fix the stormwater issues and make sure we're not adding water and that it's taken care of properly. I'll, I'll stop there.
You've got a minute left.
Oh, I have a minute?
Yeah.
I didn't know what that meant.
That was a one-minute warning.
I don't know, I didn't know what those beeps were. Okay, I do want to see the traffic counts. I want, and I know we're going to get those, I want to see how much traffic the roads can carry and how much they are actually carrying. We really didn't mention widening the road, but I'm never in favor of that for cars, because more lanes means more traffic. So I like that everyone is on the same page of bus potential, we didn't really talk about bus lane, but potential bus lane, bike lanes, and getting people in different ways there. It's compelling to me that Planning and Transportation recommended this project, and that the Plan Commission passed it 6-0, so a lot of work has gone into this before it has gotten to us, and I appreciate that work, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Councilmember Volin.
Yeah, okay, a lot of thoughts, going to try to just, you know, compact them as much as I can. But like, I think there's a lot of positives to this project. Affordable housing is onsite and not just dollars in a fund. That's the way it should be. Affordable housing should be onsite. I think that, I mean, I've been looking at a map of the area east of the bypass all evening and north of Third Street, and I see a major divide. I mean, I'm looking at what I think is Park Ridge, Morningside Drive, Longview Avenue, east of Royal on the east side, and I see a neighborhood that although it has some cul-de-sacs, is pretty much a traditional neighborhood with cross streets and connectivity. West of it is, this is the, when we talk about the density, it's all apartment buildings. It's all, I mean, this building may be a story taller than what's already there, but like, it's night and day, two different neighborhoods. I don't think that an apartment building here is inappropriate. There is a question as to whether it's too big or not, but it's not excessive. We're not talking about a six-story building or a five-story building anymore. It's, it's, I don't think it's entirely out of scale, although I know that some neighbors are concerned about it. So let's see, back to my notes here. The, many of the concerns the neighbors expressed, if there's an outdoor movie screen, I don't see it, I thought it, the developer said it was indoor. The jam room, I assume, would be soundproof. There are plenty of, of, you know, I mean, the music school rooms are soundproof too, although they're not always using amplified instruments. But I don't think it's going to be resulting in noise outside of the building. I used to live behind the Bluebird. I know what it's like to hear noise outside the building after 10:00 PM, and that's not what's proposed here. And we could do a reasonable condition to prevent amplified noise in the outdoor amphitheater, but I mean, if it, if the amphitheater needs to go, I don't think this is a big deal. As far as traffic goes, or, you know, fatalities come from speed, not from volume of traffic. If there are dangerous places, it's because our streets allow cars to go too fast, and we need to narrow the street. And you can do that with a protected bike lane, with on-street parking, whether parallel or angled. So, and when it comes to drainage, I think the neighborhood has to demonstrate that the proposed infrastructure will be insufficient. I mean, we have buildings all around us here that are dealing with drainage. We don't have flooding problems downtown because they figured out how to drain the water. If there's an excess of water in this area that can't be drained, let's find out. But I feel like the Plan staff and the Commission wouldn't have approved it if they didn't believe that the drainage would be sufficiently addressed. You know, Plan staff has determined that that's sufficient, that the questions about setbacks in open spaces, you know, were, I mean, that may be a preference of the neighborhood because they've been used to an open field for so long, but, you know, it's not a public park. Let's see. I do think that if the petitioner is going to get an exception to zoning code, that there, I mean, they've already done, you know, several things to mitigate its impact, but I really feel like this is an opportunity that is rare for a neighborhood like this to get infrastructure done, in particular, like I said, narrowing the street to slow down traffic. There's no reason anymore for 28 to 33 mile-an-hour average speeds on these streets. They should be slowed down to 20, to 25 miles an hour max. And whether there's a light there, more sidewalk, you know, that's the kind of thing that the developer can and should put in. We have a comprehensive plan. The PUD satisfied the Plan staff and the PC. To say that there are too many unknowns, I mean, it may be unknown to the neighbors, but Plan staff has done it before, and it's not, these aren't unknowns to them. So I think that, you know, we have a pretty expansive definition of neighborhood here. If it's true that there are 7,400 people in this square mile, that's an average of 11.68 residents per acre. With this project, it would be 12.2 residents per acre. That doesn't sound extremely dense to me, and I represent the downtown, and I think the downtown would rival this area for density. Finally, I'm a big fan of back-end parking, so in my last few seconds, I want to know about the the warrants for a traffic light, the possibility of, like, the dimensions of the streets that could be improved. I'd like to see parking removed in favor of more units, to bring the average parking ratio down to .6 or lower. Those are my biggest concerns. I think if we reduce the number of cars, we're going to reduce the amount of traffic. If you build parking, you induce traffic, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Well, I think that there are many unanswered questions that will, I believe necessitate another hearing on this matter, so we can get responses from staff and the transportation engineers, et cetera, about the traffic counts and other considerations. For example, I heard Ms. Scanlon say the average speed was 20 miles per hour, and Mr. Volan heard her say it was 28 to 33, so I think there's some questions to be answered in that respect, because it makes a big difference on what we might ask the petitioner for as far as streetscape, as far as perhaps narrowing the road to, to make it a more safe atmosphere for pedestrians. I, I have concerns about the quality of life in this neighborhood. The residents directly to the north, I think, will be the most impacted, Cambridge Square Apartments, houses, low-income individuals and people with disabilities, so when they are out and about, they are more vulnerable. And I do, I do have a concern about the shadow that will be cast on their, on their property and on the additional traffic that will be generated. I don't understand, I just simply do not understand why no traffic study was required prior to this coming to us for approval. It clearly states in our municipal code that we need to consider traffic congestion, and how can we do that if we don't have a traffic study of what the possible impacts are? So I think that's a problem that cannot be addressed in the next two weeks. I, of course, I very much appreciate the workforce housing that's been proposed here. I, when we were discussing the UDO in the fall, I sponsored an amendment to not allow payment in lieu of providing such housing, and so I like to see that actually provided by developer, so I do value that. I feel like the, the green building that has been advertised as part of the project is vague at best and greenwashing at worst. I mean, Fitwell is great for people who live there as far as the indoor environment, but it doesn't do anything to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is what we really need to focus on in the community. So I would really want to see more of a commitment to building practices that will reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. I think that we can try back-end parking here. I think part of the problem, and Mr. Brehob, you know, was quite upset about this as an engineer, is that people don't understand it, they just don't know it, they're not familiar with it. So if we do try that here, I think we need to do some outreach and have a lot of signage to, to help that be a smooth transition. So I would not be ready to do a straw poll vote tonight. I would hope that somebody will move to a second hearing on the 29th of this committee. And with that, I will pass it on for comment to Mr. Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. So thank you everybody, neighborhood residents, the petitioners and staff for being here tonight and answering our questions, adding your comments and concerns. My framework in addressing a project like this is certainly to use the comprehensive plan as guidance and also to rely on the expertise of staff, while also working to address neighborhood concerns as much as we can. And I do share many of the concerns that residents shared with us tonight and have the goal of mitigating them as much as we're able to. And I do appreciate that the petitioner has been working since its initial proposal in 2018 to address many of these, and from what I've heard tonight, I think many of them are adequately addressed. In particular, based on questions from staff both tonight and earlier today, we know now that stormwater drainage from the property will not be allowed to exceed what is currently running off the property. The City of Bloomington Utilities will administer this and it will be required for final approval of the plan. Regarding a traffic study, my take is somewhat different than Ms. Pudnott Smith, in that my understanding was that the traffic engineers didn't think it would be enough of an issue to necessitate a study, though I could be misunderstanding that. Moreover, a traffic study is going to be required before final approval of the plan, and that's okay with me. Ms. Porter spoke to that there would be measures taken if it rose to a level of concern based on our traffic engineers' expertise. I guess there are some really great things to this development. I think it's adding affordable workforce housing as part of the unit is significant. For the sake of comparison, I think it's worth thinking about what might be developed here if a PUD wasn't allowed. The commercial limited category is going away under the new UDO. In the very near future, this year sometime, it will be zoned either multifamily neighborhood scale, or sorry, mixed-use neighborhood scale MN, which is what it's currently shown as on the conversion map, or perhaps it will be rezoned to something different, residential high-density or something else. We don't know that, that process is ongoing, and that's not really our question. But I think it's useful to think about what MN zoning, which is what the current default is, what this would be going to, what that allows, and that is 60% impervious surface levels, three stories of, and 40 feet of height, but I'll note that this project is meaning affordable housing incentives, which allow a height bonus of another 12 feet, so that would be 52 feet of height and four stories, so, and again, 60% impervious surface coverage. We're actually starting to talk about the ballpark of what this proposal is being developed by right. It's not majorly different, and I think the concerns of higher impervious surface levels and, you know, slightly higher height than the 52 feet that would be allowed by right, hypothetically, are being, we're getting a benefit for that. We're getting the affordable housing, we're getting enhanced multi-use path, potential other enhancements to bike facilities, so I don't think it's wildly out of scale, and of course, this property is going to develop in some way. I appreciate the neighbors wanting to have some input in how that is done, and I think there has been an influence from neighbors' concerns. Let's see. Personally, I'll push back a little bit against the narrative that students living here is a bad thing. I just think of them as other people in our community. I was one until a few weeks ago, and I think it's just okay that there are students around. We don't want it to be a party central, and I echo Mr. Volan's concerns or thoughts on the amenities that were described by the petitioner. We should get clarification. Is the jam room going to be soundproofed? Is the movie screen internal to the building or the courtyard? And will the amplified, or sorry, will the amphitheater prevent amplified noise? Those are all good things. I'll take this moment to express my unabashed support for back-end angled parking, but I think we really just should look at data. We should get numbers from the city engineer, Neil Copper, about the safety numbers about this and rely on that in addressing that. Finally, regarding reasonable conditions that I would like to see, some sort of work with city staff regarding the facade of the garage, if that remains, to do artwork or some sort of enhancement of that to better, to make the building more attractive. Something like a white or green roof as a reasonable condition. The decoupling of rent from parking permit charges, as well as the creation of a multi-use path or bike lane on the east side of the property on Pet Ellis Drive, if Planning and Transportation deems that that is a sound move at this point based on our adopted transportation plan. Finally, this is not a reasonable condition, but I would like to see an updated shade study at our next meeting on the 29th, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm ready to entertain a motion to have another hearing.
Madam Chair, I'd like to suggest that since we scheduled our regular session on the 29th for 8:00 PM, that to provide us the maximum amount of time, two hours, we schedule a second land use hearing for 5:45 PM on January 29th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about the next hearing? I have a question for Ms. Porter. Do you think there will be staff available? I don't know if you've had a chance to consult with your staff, whether that's a possible conflict or whether you could staff that.
My understanding is that staff will be available.
All right, thank you so much. All right, yes, Mr. Volan?
I did ask Ms. Scanlon. She said, basically, earlier is better in general.
Okay.
And so that's why, you know, we moved to put the regular session later in the evening. So I think that, and I'm glad to hear Ms. Porter generally agrees with that. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table to schedule another hearing on this matter on January 29th at 5:45 to 7:45 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everybody, for your contributions tonight, and see you in a couple weeks. We adjourned.